Good afternoon. I'd like to call the caucus meeting to order on October 13th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. I confirm that, Ms. Brock.
Yes, ma'am, it was.
I have a motion to -- I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for caucus.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for caucus.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I think Councilman Passamit seconded it.
Yeah.
All in favor by sign of hands, and that is approved. We have an agenda item to go into executive session. A, it is under South Carolina Code 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation, case updates to council related to all pending cases in which Beaufort County is a party, and there may be items arising out of executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, by show of hands, all in favor, and we will move into that room for executive session. Thank you.[143.41][143.41](end of transcript)
There's no business arising out of executive session. At this time, we will adjourn the caucus. Thank you. Next.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the October 13th Regular Council Meeting to order. Please rise. Mark Lawson will lead us in the Pledge of Legits and invocation.
Can you hear it in the back?
No.
I didn't think so.
All right. How about now?
No.
Okay.
Here, use this one.
Mine's on.
Oh, now it's on. Okay. Operator error. Thank you.
(laughing).
I pledge allegiance and dutifully.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could all ask for a moment of silence, remembering the folks that were killed unnecessarily yesterday on St. Helena, and then I'll pray. Lord, we ask for your blessing. Let us be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger. Let us use the wisdom you have given us to make decisions that are best for many and not just a few. Let us protect those who cannot protect themselves. Let us put our pride and personalities aside to do what's best for all we represent. Please bless the citizens of Beaufort County, its employees, staff, and elected officials. Especially bless and protect our law enforcement and first responders and keep them safe. Lord, our hearts are heavy for everyone that has been affected by the tragic shooting on St. Helena yesterday. We seek your strength and comfort for the victims and their families. We ask that you bring peace and healing to St. Helena community and to all of Beaufort County. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson. This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. Can I confirm that with Ms. Brock?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Ms. Brown? All in favor by show of hands? And that is unanimous. We have one council member online today, and Councilman Glover will be a little bit late, I think, to the meeting. All right. We have minutes. Number five on our agenda, that was from the caucus and county council meeting on September 22nd. Do they have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor by sign of hands? In the minutes from that significant meeting, long meeting, on September 22nd, I should say, long meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to move the location of our October 27th meeting from St. Helena Library to the Bluffton Library. We moved, we did South of Broad, North of Broad to accommodate Buck Walter, so I'd like to get us back on track for South of Broad, so October 27th, moving to Bluffton Library.
I'll second that motion.
And second by Councilwoman Bartholomew?
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Who seconded it?
Mr. Cunningham.
Oh, yeah. Cunningham, okay. All in favor by sign of hands to move that meeting location? And that is unanimous.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I said, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. All right. Next on the agenda is Administrator's Report.
We're not going to do this.
I explained what we're doing.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. We have a few recognitions this evening. First off, I'd like to recognize Carolyn Furman, and she's here. If not, the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs Center for Women's Veterans has named Beaufort County Veterans Affairs Director Dr. Carolyn Furman, one of 28 extraordinary women veterans to receive the 2025 Women Veteran Trailblazers Initiative Award themed "Women Forging a Path." This award celebrates women veterans who inspire and uplift, making a lasting impact on their communities, shining a spotlight on women who have served with valor and continue to blaze trails for women, for veterans, their families, and caregivers. Dr. Furman is a retired U.S. Marine Corps Lieutenant Colonel. She served 25 years and worked with her department staff to expand and strengthen resources and services for county veterans since she was hired in June of 2023. Okay, next, this evening, we have some recognitions of employees for years of service. So, we've got seven employees. I've got HR Director here to assist with that. First on the list is Katrina Patterson, Administrative Assistant for the 14th Circuit Public Defender's Office Juvenile Department. Come on up.[1512.16][1512.16](applause). She served 15 years, and some notable contributions and recognition by your department include she's kind and delightful to work with, incredibly conscientious, she takes the initiative and has a great rapport with the clients as well as their parents. And she is a glue that keeps the juvenile, juvenile department together. So, we thank her. Let us protect those who cannot protect themselves. Let us put our pride and personalities aside to do what's best for all we represent. Please bless the citizens of Beaufort County, its employees, staff, and elected officials. Especially bless and protect our law enforcement and first responders and keep them safe. Lord, our hearts are heavy for everyone that has been affected by the tragic shooting on St. Helena yesterday. We seek your strength and comfort for the victims and their families. We ask that you bring peace and healing to St. Helena community and to all of Beaufort County. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson. This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. Can confirm that with Ms. Brock?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Ms. Brown? All in favor by show of hands? And that is unanimous. We have one council member online today, and Councilman Glover will be a little bit late, I think, to the meeting. All right. We have minutes. Number five on our agenda, that was from a caucus and county council meeting on September 22nd. Do they have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor by sign of hands. And the minutes from that significant meeting, long meeting, on September 22nd, I should say, long meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to move the location of our October 27th meeting from St. Helena Library to the Bluffton Library. We moved, we did South of Broad, North of Broad to accommodate Buck Walter, so I'd like to get us back on track for South of the Broad, so October 27th, moving to Bluffton Library.
I'll second that motion.
And second by Councilman Bartholomew?
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Who seconded it?
Mr. Cunningham.
Oh, yeah. Cunningham, okay. All in favor by sign of hands to move that meeting location? And that is unanimous, okay?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I said, "Thank you."
Oh, thank you. Thanks. All right. Next on the agenda is Administrator's Report.
I explained what we're doing.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. We have a few recognitions this evening. First off, I'd like to recognize Carolyn Furman, and she's here. If not, the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs Center for Women's Veterans has named Beaufort County Veterans Affairs Director Dr. Carolyn Furman, one of 28 extraordinary women veterans to receive the 2025 Women Veteran Trailblazers Initiative Award themed "Women Forging a Path." This award celebrates women veterans who inspire an uplift, making a lasting impact on their communities, shining a spotlight on women who have served with valor, and continue to blaze trails for women, for veterans, their families, and caregivers. Dr. Furman is a retired U.S. Marine Corps Lieutenant Colonel. She served 25 years and worked with her department staff to expand and strengthen resources and services for county veterans since she was hired in June of 2023. Okay, next, this evening, we have some recognitions of employees for years of service. So, we've got seven employees. I've got HR Director here to assist with that. First on the list is Katrina Patterson, Administrative Assistant for the 14th Circuit Public Defender's Office Juvenile Department. Come on up. She served 15 years, and some notable contributions and recognition by your department include she's kind and delightful to work with, incredibly conscientious. She takes the initiative and has a great rapport with the clients as well as their parents. And she is a glue that keeps the juvenile department together, so we thank you for that. Okay, next, we have Mr. Travis Hoist with the deputy, he's a Deputy Sheriff with the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Travis has served 20 years and some career achievements or notable contributions. Throughout his time at the sheriff's office, he has been a part of the joint enforcement traffic team, worked road patrol as a deputy and a supervisor, has been an instructor in various areas, and assisted with training newly hired officers. He recently transitioned to traffic management, where he's currently assisting in the daily operations of that section. Congratulations. Okay, next, we have Mr. Anthony Montgomery, Animal Control Supervisor, Beaufort County Animal Services. We got Tululeta and team coming up. We got a lot of support here.
Oh, yeah, look at this.
So, again, 20 years of service. Anthony began his career at the shelter as a kennel technician and advanced to the role of animal control officer. He and his team provide 24/7 response to service requests and citizen complaints related to domestic animal welfare throughout Beaufort County. Over his 20 years of dedicated service, Anthony has mentored numerous new staff members, helping to uphold and advance the shelter's mission of compassionate and effective animal care. So, we are grateful for your service and have a something to give to you.
Mike, I can attest to Anthony's work. He helped one of my neighbors last year. You may not remember me, but, yeah. He remembers me. He did a great job.
All right, everybody look at me. You may be expected, three, two, one, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Michael Leek, Lance Corporal, with the Beaufort County Detention Center. A few notable contributions. He serves as a direct contact corrections officer, responsible for observing and interacting with inmates within housing units during every shift. He ensures security and safety, enforces facility policies, and works to prevent and de-escalate incidents. The position demands constant vigilance, sound judgment, and a sharp awareness of inmate behavior, and we're grateful for your service. Okay, next, also from the Detention Center, we have Ms. Kimberly Brown, who's a Senior Administrative Supervisor, 25 years. So, a few comments. She consistently demonstrates professionalism and expertise in managing the administrative, clerical, and financial operations of the Detention Center. She efficiently oversees purchase requisitions. She administers the department payroll and plays an integral role in preparing the department's annual budget submission. So, that's a big job, and we are grateful. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Anthony McCollum. He's an equipment operator, too, and he's from the Public Works Road and Drainage Department with 25 years of service. So, a few highlights. With 25 years of dedicated service, Anthony has consistently exemplified excellence as a motor grader operator, a true team player. He brings precision, reliability, and an unwavering commitment to achieving the best outcome in every task. So, we thank you for that.
Mr. Moore, if I could?
Yes.
I've known Anthony for probably nine years now, so when he's not here at the county, thankfully, I get to get him on the evenings over at 300 as well. And I can tell you that work ethic that you guys have put in him definitely goes over there, too, as well. So, thank you.
Okay, next, we have Ms. Doreen Plyler, Fiscal Technician, Beaufort County Emergency Management, years of service of 25. A few career highlights. Doreen arrived at EMS in April of 2018 after spending 18 years working with the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Department. Her official title is Fiscal Technician, but like most county employees, she does whatever is necessary to keep the department moving forward. Staff can always count on her to lend a helping hand and share some Low Country history, so we're grateful for your service. Okay, that concludes our recognitions. I have one update and one last, one last comment. A couple, I guess it was probably two months ago, we talked about the Military Enhancement Fund Grant Award. We got good news, and we have been informed by the department, by the State Department of Veterans Affairs, that the Military Enhancement Fund Grant and the award of, and the amount of $2 million has been approved for the parasail and waterline replacement. That's a big deal, and it's great for the county.
Yeah, right.
This funding will be used to replace the dual 16-inch steel water transmission mains to provide water service to Marine Corps Recruit Depot. Additionally, a project will remove the existing pipe from the Archer's Creek Bridge and bore the pipe under the creek through the horizontal direction drilling process. Presently, the 16-inch steel water main is approximately 67 years old, has reached end of its service life. Since it's a pass-through grant, it will go straight to, I'm just providing you all with an update, and it will be distributed to Beaufort Jasper Water.
That's great news.
Last, but not least, today, October 13th, marks the 250th birthday of the United States Navy. So, I want to recognize that, and I want to recognize all the Department of the Navy, including the sailors, Marines, and civilians, Navy veterans, and their families, a happy 250th birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Do we have any Navy veterans besides yourself?
You can say here.
There we go, John Robinson.
Marine Corps.
Yep.
You're not until November.
Department of Navy. He gets two birthdays.
He's in November.
We'll do you in November. And then spouses of Navy, I know there's one in the audience.
There's another one.
There's another one. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all, and happy birthday. Subject to any questions, that concludes my update.
Any questions for our administrator? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
He meant to give you a "whoa" too.
I'd like, I'd like to thank all the public servants that got awards today. So important, your years of service to us. All right, moving along. Our public comment, we had one person to sign up, and I'd like to read our statement when, when speaking. Address the chairman. Avoid disrespect to counsel and any personalities. Confine yourself to what your, what your subject is, and also be mindful and respectful of others who may be watch, watching on television. And at this time, we have one person to sign up. Do we have any late signees? Okay. Mark, oh, we, one.
I think Ms. Major.
Oh, would you like to speak, Ms. Major? Okay. All right. First person that signed up is Mark Feinberg.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chairperson. For those of you on council and staff who are unfamiliar with me, I am Mark Feinberg, the Chairman of the Stormwater Utility Board. I have been a member of this board since December of 2014. I have witnessed the growth in professionalism of the county's stormwater management, staff, and employees. They have a challenging task in maintaining the extensive roadway ditches and associated areas that are susceptible to flooding. It is evident that much of the development of the county has experienced, that we, has the county has experienced, has exacerbated this condition. Several of the areas that have been recently highlighted in the news are a result of inadequate communication between the county, cities, and in some cases, South Carolina DOT. Consequently, we now find ourselves in a reactive rather than a proactive position. Careful consideration should be given by council to future development, including the potential effects of stormwater on existing neighborhoods and our low-lying areas with their proximity to waters and marshes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate your service as Chairman of Stormwater over the years. All right, Ms. Carrie Majors would like to speak.
Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. I'm sorry I was late, but she was not at the back when I came in. Again, I'm Carrie Major. I'm a resident of St. Helena Island, and our hearts right now, as I said earlier, is grieving, and prayers are going up for those who have suffered the tragedy. But I'm also continuing to pray, again, for a youth and community center on St. Helena Island. We're focused on that, and we're thankful to the council that this will happen, and we're looking forward to us having a place for our children and our youth to have the opportunity to not only have sports and exercise and all of those things, but have a place where they can have homework centers as well as after-school programs. And we're looking forward to that on St. Helena, and we bless you for just being a blessing to us. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Majors. Appreciate that. This is the end of our public comment period. Next on the agenda is our liaison and committee reports. I will start, does the Airport Board, I'll start in this direction. Is there anything to report from that board, Councilman Reitz?
Not, not tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from the Economic Development of Beaufort County at this time? Anyone?
I attended that meeting, but there's really nothing to report.
All right. The County Transportation Committee?
That's mine. I missed it because we were in another meeting, but it is viewable online.
All right. We have Bluffton Fire Department and DeFuski Fire. I don't think we have any reports from.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Cunningham.
Just that they are narrowing down their search for their interviews for the new chief, and hopefully, Mr. Moore will have that on his desk the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Outstanding. All right. Mark, do you have anything from DeFuski?
No, not from DeFuski, the Finance Committee.
Okay. All right, if you'd like to go ahead and report on the Finance Committee since.
Yes, we have two things on the consent agenda. One is purchase of 12 LifePak cardiac monitors, and then also a boom mower for stormwater management. Our next finance meeting is, Finance Administration meeting is next Tuesday, next Monday, the 19th, at 2:00.
Okay, Community Services and liaison to the city on the waterfront?
Yeah, so we didn't have the Community Services Committee. Last time, there was nothing on the agenda, so that was canceled. Hopefully, we'll have some items moving forward in November. Councilman Scaletti with the City of Beaufort has drafted, he's taken on himself to draft a survey that's going to be going out for the Waterfront Advisory Committee. We welcome, and I got to go back and actually send some suggestions back to them, but once finalized, a survey will be going out to the public to get their input about the design and what they want to see at the waterfront park. So, that's moving forward, and if I can, while you're on me. I was not able to attend the solid waste and recycling meeting. However, I did get an update. Nothing really to share with council right now, except we are, I think we're fully, fully booked for members there, and they seem to be at least able to have meetings now, and things be, things are moving forward in a better direction now than they were.
You have a full committee?
Yes.
Good. Councilman McKellen, how about the Green Space Advisory Committee? Anything to report?
You're muted.
We'll be moving forward with, considering additional applications that are coming forward in the last quarter. We're going to cancel, I think, the meeting in October, but we'll have one in November and again in December. We will be, we will be considering those. We have pending with the county, coming forward to council next meeting with regard to approval for some due diligence for some additional packages. We did collect at the beginning of this about $111,000, $111 million, and we still have a balance close to 75 to 80 million. And we're aggressively seeking the opportunity to accelerate conservation within the county and even in the adjoining counties, as we have partnerships with our surrounding neighbors for co-purchased properties. So, things are moving along very well, and we're going to be providing a monthly statement to all the members of council with regard to the funding that we received with referendum, how much we have spent, and how much we have allocated, and what our monthly balance will be.
Great. Thank you. Councilman, pass them, the Keep Beaufort County Beautiful and the Library Board. Are there any?
The Library Board will not, has not met. They will meet next month, and I was not able to attend the, the other board meeting.
And I think we have, what, two vacancies on the Library Board, maybe?
They're upcoming, yes, and they're getting information about those vacancies out to various council members.
All right. Do we have any other council members that would like to report on any committees? Yes, ma'am?
So, I'll report on the State ATX Committee. I'm the liaison to that. Brian and I attended their September 23rd meeting. We heard presentations, I think, from 35 groups that are requesting grant funding for events and projects. That State ATX Committee then met again on October 6th to review the applications, discuss the presentations, and make recommendations that will be coming to council for possible funding with that money. Myself, Larry, Mr. Moore, and York attended the Blueprint for Change Symposium sponsored by our Housing Trust Fund. The Director of Economic Research at Indeed presented economic data and challenges to housing affordability. There is a follow-up session where all elected officials will be invited. All of you received the invitation. It's November 12th from 9:00 to 11:30. It's at Palmetto Electric on 278. And several of us attended a joint meeting with Beaufort Schools Board of Education on September 30th, and the Superintendent was there. A lot of our staff was there, and Dr. Penu from USCB presented conversation about their proposed arena and convocation center, and then members of the school board and members of the council that were present weighed in on that. And just a reminder for everybody, this Thursday, October 16th, at 6:00 p.m. is Chat with Council. We have them every month. This one is at the, in the Conference Room of Disabilities and Special Needs Department. They're building at 100 Clearwater Way. We're still wandering around until the admin building's done, but this one will be north of the Broad, so we hope you all join us Thursday, 6:00 p.m.
Are there any other?
We have one.
Yes, join in, Councilman Brown, then we'll go to Councilman Dawson.
Design Review Board did not have a meeting in October, and the stormwater meeting will be this Wednesday. I don't know if I'm going to be able to make it because we're going to be at the State of the State, lunching with Governor McMaster.
All right, Councilman Dawson?
The Low Country Council of Governments Board of Director met last month, in September. After the conclusion of that meeting, the Congress Director, Ms. Sabrina Graham, announced her retirement at the end of the year, December 31st. Currently, the potential candidates are being interviewed now for her replacement, so hopefully we will have a new director onboard prior to December 31st, when she leaves Beaufort County.
That's great. Thank you. Okay.
Sherry, may I just comment on one other meeting?
Yes, sir.
Over the weekend, I attended the Hispanic Business Expo that was held at the Bluffton High School from 9:00 in the morning till about midday. I'm sorry, till about 4:00 o'clock, and there were dozens of Hispanic-owned businesses there, providing information to all the participants who came. There were also a variety of other supporters from the community who had put out exhibits to discuss the businesses that they could provide and opportunity.
to discuss the businesses that they could provide and opportunities within those businesses for employment. There were seminars conducted in both English and Spanish throughout the morning and into the afternoon that were very well-attended, and speakers were coming in from, not just from this area, but from other areas throughout the United States to make the presentations. It was very well-attended, very well-organized. There were terrific exhibits that were available for everyone to walk around and see, and it was an extremely enjoyable day at Bluffton High School.
Okay, thank you, Councilman McKellen. At this time, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second by Councilman Lawson. All in favor by show of hands to approve the consent agenda, and that is unanimous. All right, we have several ordinances for reading. I'll turn it over to our vice chair.
Thank you. Ordinance for third reading, 2025/43, is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2026 budget ordinance to repurpose millage allocated from TCL and BMH to the county's debt service. This is a public hearing. The vote at the Finance Administration Economic Development Committee meeting on September 15 was 6-0. The vote at the first reading of this ordinance, September 22, was 11-0, and the vote at second reading, October 6, was 8-0. Our CFO is at a conference, but we've already presented this three times, so I'd like a motion to approve this ordinance as read.
So moved.
I'm here if you need me, Tab.
Oh, you zoomed in, yes.
This is online if needed.
There's Mrs. Harriet. Would you like to speak on this for any of the public that, I forgot you were going to zoom in?
No, that's fine. As presented previously, this is a budget amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance. Simply put, we are repurposing the millage that we previously gave to BMH and TCL for their debt service and bringing it back to our debt service since we will assume the debt from the 2025 bond issuance.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to make a comment? No one signed up, but I'll open the floor. Okay, hearing nothing. I will close public comment. Is there anyone from council that has a comment or a question? Okay, then I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of this ordinance, this motion? Raise your hand. Okay, thank you, Ms. Harriet. You're welcome to stay with us if you like. Probably has more fun things to do over there. Okay, that's our ordinance for third reading. Now I'm on ordinance for second reading, 2025/42, text amendments to the Community Development Code Division 5.10, which is Historic Preservation. Section 7.2.120, Certificate of Appropriateness. Section 7.3.80, Historic Designation. Section 7.4.50, Public Hearing Scheduling and Notice, and Section 7.5.40, Historic Preservation Review Board. The vote at Natural Resources Committee on September 22 was 8-0. The vote at first reading and public hearing on September 22, I'm sorry, the first was Natural Resources, September 2. The vote at first reading and public hearing on September 22 was 9-2. Can I have a motion to approve this as read?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Passamit. Second?
I'll second.
Ms. Howard, seconds. We have a motion and a second for ordinance 2025/42. Mr. Merchant, you would like to present on this one?
Okay. I just wanted to, I guess if there's any takeaways to summarize, you know, this proposed amendment. The first is that we have been, you know, Beaufort County has had historic preservation ordinance for the last 25 years, and as we were going through the update of our above-ground survey, we learned from our consultant that there were several deficiencies in our current historic preservation ordinance, especially, you know, coming both from matching what the federal government requires for local communities that have regulations for properties that are on the National Register or national historic landmarks, and then also from the state archives. And so these recommended amendments are a response to those comments that we received from our consultant and from the State Department of Archives. So it's not, so it's not that we're proposing a new type of regulation, we're just proposing to clean up what we currently do. I think that the second important takeaway is that, once we adopt these changes, we will have a local designation but no properties on it. So the next step will be for, we're working with our Historic Preservation Review Board, is to come to council with recommendations for what to include as local designation, and likely what that will be are properties that are already on the National Register. So I just wanted to say those two things because, you know, adopting these amendments will not mean new regulations for the county. It'll basically mean improving and being more in sync with what is required for local governments to regulate.
And for the public, this begins on page 84 in the packet. It's very lengthy, and we'll take questions from council. Ms. Brown?
I have a question and I also have a comment. You said the consultant. Who's the consultant?
This was StanTech. We hired them to, we have a, an above-ground survey of historic resources, and the current version was adopted in, you know, it was surveyed and adopted in the late 90s, and so this is really the first time we've been revisiting that. And so that, so it was StanTech is the consultant.
We have you on before?
Yes.
I have a comment, Madam Vice Chair. I'm going to be voting no on this because this is a government overreach, plain and simple. It is not our job as county council to decide what is or isn't historic. That belongs to the state and the preservation experts, not elected officials. This gives government too much control over private property and personal land decisions. We are elected to serve our constituents, not to determine history. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Ms.? Anyone else, please? Yes, Mr. Bartholomew?
So I've been working on some amendments to this, and I'm actually going to make a motion here in a minute to see if we can... Well, not remand it back, just see if we can push it forward to get, to circulate those and continue to work on it. But my question, you said it doesn't make any changes really, but it does. It expands the power of the Historic Preservation Review Board by granting them the power to make districts, which was not in their purview before.
But they're not making districts, they're making recommendations.
Right, but they didn't have that before. They didn't have that recommendation power before. That is a substantial change in the ordinance. And then also saw there were some citation issues, it looks like to the CFR, 36 CFR 67, which deals with the whole federal scheme for it. And I get we were trying to extract a portion of it, but I don't think it's been properly cited in there in the ordinance. And there were some other portions of the ordinance that I was looking at that were relatively open-ended and open to a lot of subjectivity. What I've been working for is trying to put a little bit more objective standards in some of those criteria. Not major changes to it, but there are some substantial changes, and I think personally for me, I would like some more time to work on it and give, let legal have a chance, because I just sent it to Brian, have legal have a chance to look at it, circulate it to council and let them review it before we move forward with it. Now's the time to do it between first and second. There's going to be any major changes to it.
So do you want to amend the motion?
Yeah, actually, I, well, it's a new motion to postpone. Until when's the next meeting?
Defer till, either October 27 or to November.
Let's do November. When's the November meeting?
Yes, November, because I won't be here on...
10.
So November 10.
Okay, I'd make a motion.
You have a little stream.
What?
Absolutely no idea. Anyway, sorry. So I'll make a motion to postpone until the November 10 meeting in order to give us time to review some amendments and work on it a little bit more.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, discussion on Mr. Bartholomew's motion. I know I have to go back. Anybody? All right, let's vote on Mr. Bartholomew's motion. Do you need him to repeat it, or you have it?
To postpone it to November 10.
November 10.
Okay. All in favor of postponing this ordinance?
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, okay, Mr. McCollum's a yes. Now I got to go back to the original?
That's it.
That's it, okay. All right, thank you. Now I'm on ordinance for first reading, 2025/46, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of utility easement number 907041 for right-of-way owned by Beaufort County known as Dolphin Watch Point located on Ladies Island. This is a public hearing. The vote at Public Facilities Committee meeting on September 15 was 7-0. Can I have a motion to approve this as read?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for ordinance 2025/46. Brian was going to explain this, or Jared, you're going to do it? Okay, Jared, you're up. Mr. Frilix will talk about this.
Good evening. This is pretty straightforward. So this is a county dirt road that we own and maintain in the process of paving. We have a paving project outstanding. There's an existing overhead power line. As part of the paving project, that power line has to adjust a little bit, so we're just adjusting their utility easement with their adjusted pole that's being relocated.
And for the public, it's on page 150 in the packet. This is a public hearing. No one signed up, but is there anyone in the public that wishes a comment? Step forward or forever hold your peace. Okay. I see none, so I'll close the public hearing. Anyone on council have a comment or a question? All right, let's vote. All in favor of this ordinance, please raise your hand. All right, thank you very much. This is ordinance 2025/47, is an ordinance to appropriate excess funds collected from the 2018 transportation sales tax. This is a public hearing. The vote at Public Facilities Committee meeting on September 15 was 7-0. Can I have a motion to approve this as read?
So moved.
Mr. Passamit makes a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Bartholomew, second? All right. We have a motion and a second for ordinance 2025/47. Mr. Frilix, you're up again.
So this is a follow-up to some of the actions that council took over the summer following the failed referendum in November. So we had excess funds that had been collected but never appropriated, and then in July, we took, the council took the motion and approved a resolution to reprioritize the re-scope projects list. So this is a follow-up to that action, and so this is taking the excess money that was never reallocated and now reallocating it to the prioritized list that is included in the resolution that's in the packet, Resolution 2546.
And for the public, that starts on page 157. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment or ask a question? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Anyone from council have a question or a comment?
I just have a comment. I thank you for all the work you're doing, and we're able to get those projects completed here soon.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll take a vote. All in favor of this ordinance, please raise your hand. Thank you, Mr. McKellen. All right, thank you. That's it, ordinances? Oh, St. James, yeah, I missed it, okay. This is ordinance 2025/48, is an ordinance to appropriate $848,912 to St. James Baptist Church from the established project funds for the associated furniture and fixtures related to the overall project. The vote at Public Facilities Committee meeting on September 15 was 7-0. I'd like a motion to approve as read.
So moved.
Are the rest of you just going to let Mr. Passamit do all these?
No.
Okay. Who's going to second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew, second, thank you. We have a motion and a second for the ordinance. This is a public hearing. Jared, would you like to speak on this one, too? It's like whack-a-mole, you keep coming up.
That's right. Well, y'all are taking them fast, so we'll go with them. So this one's as old, or if not older, than the last one, 2018, so this project's been going on a while. The full cost of the project is, as represented in your packet, is $9.8 million, including in the overall cost is the furniture and fixtures, and what we're doing through this is we're, that's typically not something that's included in your, in your construction package, it's separate, and so these funds are being allocated for the church to take on that scope of the work of the project, and they have funds that are part of the project. They're estimated about $1.3 million is what they would receive for their purchase of the existing site that they are putting into the new project, and so this is, this portion is obviously covered by their amount of funding that they're contributing to.
I'd just like to make a comment. Councilman McKellen, was it go back to 2015 or earlier than that? 2015, at least.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's been going on for quite some time, actually, and it's finally reaching a conclusion thanks to the good work that Jared's done with a variety of other people who are on that committee that meet almost on a, they were meeting on a monthly basis. It may now be, they may be meeting less because they're reaching the end. And we've raised a good deal of money, started out with a few million dollars, and now you can see it's just about tripled to the amount that we're using, because time passes and inflation bites in, and the property that the church is going to move to is really fabulous, and it will be a very impressive five-acre site right off of 278. So all of the work that's being done to create the sanctuary and furnish the sanctuary and arrange for the parking lots and all these things are costing a good deal of money. So it sounds like it's a shocking number to deal with, but it is absolutely necessary. So I think, thanks for the vote from everyone. It's a very important project.
Mr. McKellen, since you've been in this from the beginning, could you just tell the public that might not be aware, where is this located and why is it moving?
Sure. I've only been in it since the middle. The beginning began before I was on council, but the church is currently located in District 10 on the island. It's at the end of the runway in what they would call, what's the word for it, Jared?
The north end of the runway, in the runway protection zone.
Yeah, the one where it's protection zone. If there's a likelihood of a arrival or a departure plane that would be going down, it would be going down right there. So it became necessary for the parishioners to give up the, give up the church, which is a historic church and a historic property. But they'll be moving down the, down the road towards 278 to a much bigger piece of property, and with the sanctuary that will be, more use of the congregation and the, the church and property that is historic will be purchased by the town, and the town will memorialize that. The church will probably be demolished, but the historic site will be appropriately recognized. Cherry Hill School will also be moving down to the new sanctuary site, and it's going to be a very impressive location and a very impressive set of buildings that will create all of the property for the church. So it's been a long time coming, and the, there's been a great many people involved in it, and I would say that it's probably been going on for longer than 15 years, but we're, as I said, reaching the end. So I say congratulations to everyone who stuck, stuck with this, worked through it, and reaching a successful conclusion.
Thank you. Mr. Frilix, you're really moving this along, keeping them on track monthly. So this is a public hearing. No one signed up, but is anyone from the public wish to comment or ask a question on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment, the public hearing. Anyone from council have a question or a comment? We've gone over this many times, so. All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of this ordinance, please raise your hand. All right, thank you to everybody. That concludes our ordinances.
Okay, we're back on resolutions. Resolution 2025/60 is a resolution updating the Beaufort County Freedom of Information Act policy. The vote at the Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee meeting on September 15, 2025, was 6-0. We have a motion to approve Resolution 2025/60.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, and it is unanimous. Thank you. Resolution 2025/61 is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a memorandum agreement with wet utility providers to comply with the provisions of the South Carolina Act 36. The vote at Public Facilities Committee meeting on September 15, 2025, was 7-0. Do we have a motion to pass Resolution 2025/61?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Passamit. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And Ms. Councilman Brown, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor by show of hands, and that is unanimous. The last resolution is Resolution 2025/62, a resolution to implement a customer facility charge, CFC, on rental car contracts and direct the collection and application of the CFC proceeds. The vote at the Public Facilities Committee meeting on September 15, 2025, was 7-0. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2025/62?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I think I heard Ms. Tavernet first, and a second by Councilman Passamit. All in favor by show of hands, and that is unanimous, too. Just another reminder, this week is Chat with Council at the DSN Building, which is off Castle Rock Road, and we'll probably have some directional signs for that. It's on Clearwater Way, but it's off of Castle Rock Road. What time does that start?
6:00.
6:00. No further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
6:50. So I get two houses, only 50 minutes.